Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So obviously, we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I guess we'll get right into it. We're going to have Carl obviously go through the budgets with us and give us some updated information on the council side. Anybody who would like to ask a question after each one call goes through, he will ask if there's any questions that anybody on the council may have at that time. And then please, since there are so many people on the call, if we can all just stay on mute while Carl's going through everything, it'll make it a little bit easier without any feedback. So at this point, I will give it a call and he can get going. Okay, so we'll start with the town manager budget, which is under tab one. Mary's projecting it on the screen if you can't or you don't have it in the book that we sent you earlier. We can see what the numbers are that we're talking about. So a lot of this is driven by salary expense. Included in here is the stipend provided to town council members. The rest of it is really contractual between agreements made between council, town manager, the administrative assistant who works here in the office, and the part-time receptions. Repairs and maintenance is included for any items that have to be covered for miscellaneous repairs. Miscellaneous expenditures is part of contractual relationship for dues to the International City Management Association. The total increase in this budget year over year is a little over $5,000. Any questions that relates to this page? If not, we can go to finance, which is under tab two. Also projected on the screen, this budget has an overall decrease in it by $6,400. Again, the majority of the expenses associated with payroll for the employees. There is a drop in the payroll line based on a union agreement that had been made previously, providing an additional payment to one of the employees who was handling payroll. That union agreement had an end time to it that has now ended, so the salary is now adjusted downward from where it was at by prior arrangement. So that's one of the bigger drivers here in terms of drop in expenses. Other expenses include elected official salary, which is the stipend that is paid to the treasurer for his service to the town. Travel expense, again, we're trying to right-size where we think mileage is going to go now that it's pairing in individual apartment budgets based on instead of the one large lump sum where it used to sit before. IT and technology is really tied to the software program that we utilize for our financial system. With the town, postage is self-explanatory. Dues and fees is for the GFOA and the Connecticut branch of the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Office Association. Are there any questions in the finance department budget? Hearing none. We'll move on to the town clerk's budget. There's a $3,000 increase in this budget year over year. So the highlights of this budget, travel expense, again, trying to find that right sizing of it. There's also a baked-in assumption that classes for the training of the town clerk and staff will continue virtual, at least for that fiscal year, while people figure out where we're going in a post-COVID world. Other professional technical services is tied to the COT system. And microfilming COT is the service that maintains land records, so that you have a searchable database of real estate transactions. General supplies is tied to postage. We're carrying a little bit more here under the assumption that absentee ballots are going to be used again in the next election that not have any aggressive state subsidy that there was in the presidential election. Assuming absentee ballots is used as the means for voting, I think we need to get some experience as it relates to what that's going to ultimately cost us in presidential years and whether or not this past November was an outlier for utilization. Some of the other lines are trying to hold flat with where we were last year. So miscellaneous expenditures and election costs, that's balance. And actually, the physical paper ballot and programming for the electronic voting machines. Any questions for the town clerk's budget?
Carl, it's Christine Gopiel. Just have a question about some of the resources the town clerk has in terms of the grant funding, I believe, that comes through, and then the town clerk has the discretion of utilizing those funds. In the past, there's been donations to charitable organizations, et cetera, and then also purchasing resources for town hall. I'm wondering if those funds this year, if the funding has been allocated to any specific resource? No.
Answering before I could, Sharon's statement was no, and the answer is no. Sharon and I are in discussions on process and how that would roll out going forward. So that those dollars remain in place. It's allowed to carry over year to year by statute. There's no other questions. Next is the assessor's office, which appears under tab four. So the assessor's office has a little over $7,000 increase year over year. Aside from personnel expense associated with staffing, you'll see that some of the numbers are trying to stay parallel with where we were last year. Travel expense. There's an assumption baked in here on having to go to court for assessment appeals. The in-service is the training requirements for certifications for the different levels of assessing. You'll see that there's a continuation from last year is $4,500 for updating tax maps, so that mapping, which is a GIS function, is correct. Other professional services is the personal property law, which is done annually in town, which maintains that we have a strong brand list. Technical services is our contractual relationship with quality data. Quality is part of our service array. It'll also appear under the tax department, so it's creation of tax bills and the data connection between the two, as well as the printing that takes place. IT technology maintenance, that's the camera system or vision for the assessor's database. Postage is self-explanatory at this point in time. Periodicals is not magazines, rather that's the guides that are used for the assessor's office to help determine values. Because water vehicles are assessed every year, you're constantly looking at updated data guides and the rest for determining. Any questions on the assessor's office? Hearing none. Takes us to the tax collector's office. So obviously, the biggest expense is personnel. You'll see a drop from the department request to the town manager recommended under the per-timer line. There was a request to take the rate of pay from $17.59 to $20 an hour. The budget that's proposed to you has that going from $17.59 to $18.59. So there is a slight reduction from what was requested, but it is taking up the rate of pay from the per-timer up by a dollar, so there's an increase going from 2021 to what's proposed for 2122. Outside of the salary line items, again, travel is for trips to the bank, as well as professional development classes. A lot of the additional line items fall back into quality data. So other professional services is quality data for the online payment option, allowing the public to pay their taxes electronically without having to come in here physically or submit a check. Technical services is software support. Postage is the envelopes and the postage, and again, that takes us back to the relationship with quality data. General supplies is office supplies. Other is printing the bills and the rate book. DMV fees is a flat dollar amount that is paid to the state, which connects the state DMV database to us, so that there's duplication going back and forth, primarily to have delinquent taxpayers not be able to register a vehicle until they get a clearance on tax. And then the other items is LexisNexis, which is a subscription-based computers portal, which aids the office in identifying people that have moved, track down the addresses, so that we are making sure that bills are getting to the right entities. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, that would take us to inland wetlands, which is tab six. Inland wetlands, the biggest component of this is salaries. So you have the clerk position and the program share of the something enforcement officer in this budget. Aside from that, the rest of the line items are essentially flat. The only reduction that I made going from the departmental request to what's proposed to you was to take down the other items line item. It's really based on historical utilization. You can see that in the past, the line item has been not used or underutilized based on the departmental request. Other professional services assumes a engagement with the town engineer, who would be following up on asks that come from the inland wetlands commission. Training is offered for commission members as well as staff. You can see that the history of utilization is a little choppy. In the past, in recent years, it's been pretty consistent. There's an assumption here that that's going to be continued virtual rather than in person. Are there any questions on inland wetlands? If there's no questions on inland wetlands, that takes us to ZBA. ZBA is tab seven. So this is a budget staying fairly flat. Not a lot here to talk about that's significant. Training or assuming a placeholder that some members of the board will be utilizing training, and again, there's some continuing it being virtual. The rest of the line items are pretty much in line with where we were last year. You'll see that it is down from where it was last year, reflecting reality of how the dollars are spent from the ZBA. Any questions on ZBA? If not, that would take us to planning and zoning, which is under tab eight. So a couple of coastal centers here that drive the P&amp;Z budget. Obviously, salary is the biggest area here, so this is the other half of the CEO wetland position. And then the planning and zoning clerk is included in this salary area. The other significant line item of note is other professional services. The core of that is the contractual relationship we have with the planner. That's $4,800. There's an additional $10,000 included in the proposal, which is supposed to be provided for additional work to help the commission rewrite regulations. So that's work outside of the scope of what the engagement is for John Guskowski. The reason for the drop between what was requested to what is being proposed is properly allocating the additional in-scope request that was made by the departments. The total request was to also include Mike DeMato to help with implementing the electronic permitting system, which was part of the capital plan last year. That really should be tied to the capital expense rather than reflected in the operating budget. So that will be reflected when we get to capital of the 25th. Rest of the line items are essentially flat. Other items has a reduction in it. Part of that was used for support for the plotter that's used in the department. That's really an IT expense, so it was extracted out here and then will be reflected in IT since they're picking up all of the other printer maintenance across the town. Are there any questions on planning and zoning?
Yes, Carl, I have something very quickly. That other professional services line, when you first started referring to that, I missed the first part, the relationship we have with consultant planner John Guskowski. Could you restate that and how exactly he is paid?
So he's a contractor. The rate of pay is 40, it comes out to be $48,000 a year. So that constitutes the core of that request. On top of that is another $10,000, which would be for either John or Mike DeMato, who has been a partner of John and other consultant that has been used to assist the planning and zoning commission with regulation rewrites. I think as you know, and the council knows from your reports, that they do have a regulatory review committee that is tackling updating some of the regulations. The council knows that there's been issues with how fees are calculated, so that's a minimum of the low hanging fruit of what needs to be addressed. But there are other regulations to be looked at. So the reason why there's a disconnect between the request and the manager's recommended is that the additional $12,000 of the cut that I took is really a capital expense. The request was used by DeMato to assist with an electronic permitting system to be brought online. And since that's a capital project, it really should be a capital expense, not an operating expense.
And Carl, what on average does John dedicate to Clinton weekly? Do we have it or even monthly?
He's here one day a week physically and then responsive to emails and phone calls as needed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If there's no other questions, that takes us to the building department, tab nine. The largest component of this budget is personnel expense for the building official and clerk. Rest of the line items have been held basically flat. There is at the department request level, you'll note a zeroing out of expense for code books and has purchased those and zeroed it out at his request level. It will be something ultimately that will have to be brought back when the state chooses to update its code. But for at least this year, it's out. Any questions on the building department? If there's no questions, next up is human services. Human services is tab 11. So again, personnel is the largest expense here.
Carl, are you skipping over water pollution?
Water pollution control is not scheduled for tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm on that page. Sorry.
I don't know if I have stamina to do every single budget tonight. So human services. The only thing I would note here is that the budget truly reflects the costs associated with the employees for human services. And the only thing to point out for your attention is the line that says veteran elderly affairs stipend at $6,700. This is a payment that has been made to one of the employees and an assignment that was given that goes back to the time of first selectman Fritz. However, it's never really been singularly called out for in the budget. It's been paid from whatever sources have been available each year. So in this particular case, we're trying to make sure that we're capturing costs and slotting them in as appropriate rather than paying it based on sweeping accounts and the rest. So it's new in that it appears, but not a new expense. It's an expense that goes back a number of years. Within the rest of the budget, program costs, the second from the bottom, at $2,000. This is an expense that really doesn't have much to do with human services, so this is really with providing funding to the VFW to meet the needs of what they do to honor veterans at their and the grave sites with wreaths and flags and the like. Again, it carries $2,000 as an expense item. I sized it last year at $2,000 instead of $2,500 that was requested based on the reality of actual expenditures. Had correspondence with Phil Sangle earlier this year, who is leading it up for the VFW, because he was trying to track down where the funds come from, and his confirmation was that the expense for this particular line is going to be between $1,500 and $1,800. So the $2,000 isn't really an expense that David Malillo controls, but it's here. Other items is $5,000, which is there to support resident emergency needs, which you can see has been spent in the past, likely will be spent and increased pressure put on it due to COVID. What other resources can be brought to bear to respond to unmet needs as it relates to COVID? There's been some generosity out of the Middlesex Community Foundation, which has helped provide dollars that can be dedicated towards mortgage systems, rental assistance, and facilities. Once we turn to whatever normal is going to look like and normal activity resumes, there's likely going to be pressure as people try and get their legs underneath them post-pandemic. Professional services is clinical supervision, so that's contractual relationship that's been consistently paid for by the town. The other expenses are related to providing programming that's delivered by department. My questions on human services?
Carl, it's Christine Gopiel. With the human services budget, since it is very complex with the number of grants and salaries over time, et cetera, that are covered within it, are you going to show that breakdown at some point within this? And/or do other the members of the council understand or need further information of that structure of that department?
So I'd look for guidance from the council as to whether there's the need for further understanding of structure. What's reflected here is the extent of taxpayer support for what human services does. Because the grant exists inside of the town's budget, there are a number of off-budget expenses and contract employee relationships associated with a federal grant that has been secured, providing outreach assistance and trying to encourage good behaviors out of youth as it relates to substance abuse and lifestyle choices. So this is the taxpayer side of the house. So you'll notice on the salary side that it doesn't really deal a lot with youth-type activities. It's really more, I guess, you look at more social services.
I guess in the past, there was a lot of questions from the Board of Selectmen, and so we had created a sort of a diagram showing the different resources and how they were allocated and what was taxpayer side, which was then ultimately the grant side, what technically is reimbursable. And I do know it does cover other areas of the budget as well, like you said, social services, human services, and there's some within the general government as well. It's complex, so I just thought it might be helpful for the other folks at the council.
If there's no other questions or comments, next up is what we're calling senior services under tab 12. Certainly open to directions from the council as to whether you want to rename this differently. But this is the extension of the senior resources task force and their recommendation and the council's action to include in the budget an allocation of part-time employee to be a senior program coordinator. The salary line item was derived based on the report that the town council received from your advisory committee, which assumes 15 hours a week worth of work at $24 an hour. Of course, this fiscal year focused on developing program, putting together resources that can support the needs of seniors in terms of what are unmet needs or program gaps that might exist. $1,000 is provided under program expenses for operating in the event that the individual has cash flow needs to offer programming. Not all programming opportunities will be free or offered through other entities. So that's, it's an approximation that there will be some dollars needed to provide new programming opportunities. Again, assuming we get to some restoration of normality with a pandemic. Are there any questions on senior services?
All right, just one, Carl, Dennis Donovan here. How many hours a week was that senior services coordinator? All right, just one, Carl, Dennis Donovan here. How many hours a week was that senior services coordinator?
Yep, 15 hours a week. That was the original recommendation. So that's 180 hours a year.
Thank you.
So next up. Skipping over Park and Rec, which we'll be doing on the 25th. Takes us to Waseam Maintenance under tab 14. At this, this is basically a custodial expense with the back, Public Works took over custodial supervision a number of years ago. This budget really only carries the salary expense now. Materials and supplies are all picked up in the public works department budget. So at this point in time, it's just a payroll expense for a full-time custodian. That's at town hall. Agreement is that there are two full-time employees in this building. There's a full-time custodian over at the PD, which is included in here. Part timeline, there's an assumption of a part-time worker in town hall and one that's utilized by Park and Rec. So that's, that too is reflected here. So what we've assumed is continuing the staffing model that it has been in place. We're trying to make an assumption that at some point in time, the building will return back to normal. At some point in time, we're going to have people that are going to be wanting to utilize this building for program activities. And the auditorium will return back to life. Those all had staff support from the town custodians. So we continued that, assuming that we're going to go back to that level of operation at some point in time. The guess is that that will take place next fiscal year. Any questions on custodial budget? If there's not, that takes us to Public Works under tab 15. The majority of Public Works expense is payroll. And as was previewed last night in the liaison report from the Public Works Commission, you'll know lower half of the page that the salary for the assistant director position was zeroed out. This was not done in isolation, following the departure of Bill Watkins to go take a position. Municipality, there was a conversation with the director in terms of what the needs of the department were. Supervision standpoint. The job description that was in place for this position was not necessarily being fulfilled. And what we, what we had as our operating model at that point in time. This is one of the last cuts that I made. Based on wanting to see how the budget was shaking out. I do know that there is the need to provide support to the director. The conversation with Todd was that support needs to be a working supervisor, not somebody who's necessarily going to drive a desk, but somebody that's would be getting their hands dirty. I know from the conversations that I've had with Todd is that his desire would be to slot in a worker bee rather than a supervisor, if that was the council's desire to add in somebody in the truck driver position. And then still leave the assistant director vacant. I can know from the report that was given last night, the Public Works Commission has a different opinion than that. Rest of the line items outside of it. Overtime is a function of historical averages for general overtime, overtime associated with fields. We are assuming that sports will go back. I believe the governor is going to be making some sort of announcement. So if sports are to return to some sense of normalcy. That we need for striping the fields and taking care of it. Snow and ice is based on historical averages. This year seems to not fit within the historical average, but that's, that's been the process that's been used in the past. Clothing allowance is contractionally driven to provide for safety shoes and certain level of clothing. Snow plowing and sanding is the materials that are used for clearing the roads. So that, that is salt and sand. Your other line items, repairs and maintenance. They're all costs associated with trying to stay on top of town's assets and to provide for repairs to our facilities. Town hall building maintenance is pulled out as a separate line item to comply with the Waseam Trust that the town is providing dedicated dollars to maintain this building. Clearly we are doing more than $15,000 worth of work here. But that separate line item is a function of the trust document. Other costs are associated with equipment maintenance. Landfill costs, we're assuming that Mira is going to pass through another rate increase. That is what was telegraphed last year. That they're going to provide for an increase in municipal solid waste as well as start to phase in a fee to take recyclables with the market falling out, recycle materials. We haven't got anything firm as of this date from Mira in terms of what that's going to be. Obviously they've had a change in their operations where they're no longer running the burn plant in Hartford. So they're in the process this year of shutting it down. But we'll move to a model of operating Hartford as a transfer station to take waste. And ship it out west to Pennsylvania, Ohio and other landfills outside of the state of Connecticut. Right now I don't have an assumption that I can build a budget around for any change in state policy. There is no clear state policy as of right now. There are some desires that have come through a consensus building process with Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection. But some of that needs statutory backing. I know there are bills working their way through the process. So assuming some of those bills flush out implementation of any kind of change to municipal solid waste. Flush out as a 22, 23 or subsequent year expense. Diesel, we're in last year, or this what's proposed will be the last year of the pricing agreement that we have on diesel. This is the expense because the Public Works Department is operating as the central filling station for everyone. There's diesel that's also delivered to different generators across town. Safety management is contractual relationship for maintaining first aid boxes, but then there's also some of your training that's provided to help with control workers' comp expenses. Any questions or discussion as it relates to public works?
It's Christine.
Go ahead, Christine.
Oh, sorry. I, I don't know if you can fill us in a little bit more about the differences from management versus the commission in terms of filling the position and then the long-term management, I guess of the department?
Yeah. So from, from my perspective in terms of what we were getting. You know, I think there wasn't as much value in what we were getting relative to what the, I think the job description envisioned. I can see the value of having assistant director for succession planning. And clearly that proved its value with Pete Neff's retirement and having Todd there to shadow him and get a better understanding. At least as it relates to today, Todd doesn't intend to retire anytime soon. So the need to have a position for succession planning doesn't make a lot of sense. So that leaves you with what's the scope of work for that position and what would it be doing? It's just a judgment call. Most small towns are not operating with a director and a deputy director. The Department of Job Description was very robust and that work wasn't necessarily being delivered. So gets to trying to put together a budget for what makes reasonable sense and making an adjustment. Remembering in a reasonable and responsible budget to the taxpayer. As I said earlier, if there's the desire to take it back, you're not going to get an argument out of me. But it's a matter of what you put back. Conversations that I've had with Todd outside of the commission is that the department would, the needs of the department would be better served by having somebody in a worker bee position as a truck driver rather than a management position in the case of an assistant. Todd, I don't know if you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, like, like we've said, Carl, I mean, I, I, there's definitely, the succession part is always needed. But I, my envisionment as we work today, with especially since we've put pretty much committed two guys to the buildings. Taking care of the assets of the buildings as I really need another worker. And in discussions with my crew leaders, maybe increasing their responsibilities a little more, stepping them up a little bit. Have those conversations. So all the work would remain in the, in the public works union. But it gives me people that are boots on the ground when I need it also. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, the assistant director spot was valuable. But I just think right now, I think I can use it in different aspects. I mean, it, to be making a, there's no perfect world.
So if there's an interest in making some sort of restoration, I can certainly calculate what that expense will be in terms of just the salary line item for Public Works, but then on the employee benefit side. And you can have that as, as an option to further contemplate when we have to meet either later this month or early March to start finalizing a budget that will go off to the public for a public here. There's no other questions or comments on public works? That takes us to technology on tab 16. So technology. The staff that involves a park climber who functions as an assistant and then IT lead. Underneath that is professional services as a significant cost center. So some of that is, or the majority of that is actually the relationship with the vendor that Ed utilizes, that supports network and additional funding for support that comes from the Board of Education's IT staff based on the longstanding relationship between the town and the Board of Ed. Official highlights is repairs and maintenance, which is for some small item replacements. Seems as if that could be cut and I took that reduction based on historical utilization rates. Communications is picking up the expense associated with Verizon for cell phones and cable. There's an increase in here tied to the capital project for body cameras and dash cameras per the state mandate for police accountability. So that use of those cameras is going to have a data expense, expense associated with it. That we're working through. So we've put some money into this, assuming that there's going to be an expense associated with Verizon as a vendor to, to allow for the data exchange to take place between the cameras and the police department. Infrastructure is the leases for the town's copiers as well as maintenance printers. And again, as I noted, the increase for the plotter that was parked or I guess assumed that it was going to be within the planning and zoning budget. But it's included here with all other printer relationships. Any questions on IT?
Carl, I'm sorry, my reception cut out. When, I'm just looking at the assistant and there's a substantial increase there. Was that what you just discussed? Or is that a union contract? I didn't quite catch that.
I didn't discuss it and he is a unionized employee.
So the, the increase is a almost $6,000 increase. Is that within the union contract or is the hour's been expanded as well?
Hours were not expanded. There's two, there's a step in there that's not included because the budget that's adopted does not reflect where that position was coming in on, based on the contract settlement that was entered into. If you recall, when we did the budget last year, that was assuming we did not budget in each department raises that was put into contingency line item.
Carl, I'm sorry, I, I, I think I may have drifted out too. The professional services line at 89604, could you just give a very brief overview of that line? Sorry.
Sure. 71604 is for Omni Communications, which is a vendor from the Board of Education that provides network support. So there is a relationship between the town and the Board of Ed to have some commonality on IT support. We are utilizing Omni as our vendor and they, they comprise the majority of that expense. Then you've got some additional monies in there for support that's provided by IT staff from the Board of Education that support our network needs here. Okay, thank you.
If I can, and just add in, if you're looking Carl, excuse me, not Carl, Eric, on the, the substantial increase, that was a restructure within IT and certain budgets across the board were absorbed, some of the services and they were pulled back into IT to manage them. So there was a substantial shift during that time period to better reflect where the services were actually being provided out of and also in terms of IT managing those services, contractual services, et cetera.
If there's no other comments or questions on IT, that takes us to Police Department. So if you look at the, at the budget, there's been an effort to try and keep the majority of the operating expenses in line with where things were in the year prior. The adjustments are contractually driven. Salary line item. So looking at the budget and deviations between what the department uh, looking at the budget and deviations between what the department request was and what I'm proposing to you, I took a reduction uh, under marine support. Uh, just to reflect more of the historical spend rate, uh, that $4,000 looks more in line with what recent utilization has been uh, for police voting activity. Uh, prisoner cost is flat. That's basically providing meals for people that are staying in our temporary arrangements. Uh, armory, uh, this has an increase in it. This is a purchase of ammunition. Market costs of late are suggesting that getting ammunition is becoming problematic and as a result, pricing is uh, increasing for what the department needs to get, get their, their ammunition needs. K-9 program has an increase over the year prior of a thousand dollars to provide for support for the dog. Commission expenses are proposed at flat. Pretty much recall our conversations from last year, there's not much more going on in here. Uh, diesel fuel, diesel gasoline fuel, I did make a reduction from what the chief was asking for, again, trying to reflect not only commodity expense, but historical utilization rates have been. Uh, radios and communications is essentially flat, uh, vehicle maintenance. So there's a reduction here between what the department asked for and what I'm proposing, uh, which is twofold, first reflecting the reality that the town has purchased new vehicles with a more reliable track record than what you had before of underfunding capital fleet replacements and then the choice of sourcing those vehicles with I don't know if the parent company is anymore, but it's a Dodge now or was Dodge. Um, so you've replaced the majority of that fleet with newer vehicles and then also replaced it with a vehicle that is more reliable. So if you look at where that has been historically, it has been uh, more recently, it's been less than where you were if you look out at sixteen, seventeen, when you were just in the process of initiating vehicle leases to swap over the fleet and get rid of the Dodge vehicles that were not serving the town uh, terribly well. Uh, the other adjustment of note between what was requested and what's recommended is uh, taking the overtime expense down from what was requested to where it has been in the past, or at least was last year. Um, schedule adjustments that were collectively bargained in the past to change the uh, schedule from five days on, two days off to four days on, two days off, uh, delivered a reduction in overtime expense over time. Uh, so therefore, the logic was that, that they should be able to try and hold that line. Historically, these number, even the numbers in year sixteen, seventeen is less than some of the historical highs that you had on the five-two schedule. Uh, so there's a reduction from department requests to uh, what's proposed. Uh, any questions or comments as it relates to the Police Department budget? Hearing none. That takes us to Communications, uh, which is tab.
Hey Carl? Excuse me, Carl? I was muted, uh, so you didn't hear me. I just had one question on the police budget. Uh, more for clarification purposes than anything regarding longevity. I noticed that back from six, you know, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, right on up to really last year, we were looking at a budget of somewhere around in twenty thousand, early twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-four thousand. Now we're closer to forty thousand. Could someone explain to me the increase uh, in the longevity line item?
That was collectively bargained with the union, uh, so there is a one-time adjustment that takes it up and then the glide path will stabilize after this year. Uh, as I noted for you, when I presented the contract for approval, the net cost for the contract was a reduction. So even with this expense, the town was getting significant savings with the bargaining unit shifting to the state partnership plan as opposed to the previously negotiated healthcare plan that was provided by uh, a multi-Board of Education town co-op, which was not sustainable once we broke away from the co-op as maintaining that as an attractive price uh, for that benefit. So that's part of the trade-off in collective, in collective bargaining. What you'll see next year is that that dollar amount should start to stabilize. It's also a function of years of service, so as we see some retirements take place in the Police Department backfilled by newer members, the number is, is good, would fluctuate downward.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
So Communications is under tab eighteen. Uh, year over year, there's a reduction uh, in this particular expense area. About a lot of uh, difference between what was requested and what is proposed, some minor reductions I took. Small amount to reflect historical spend rates on things like radio repair, radio radar and siren, siren repair and uh, drops in training to reflect what the actual spend has been. If you look at uh, the adopted budget to what is requested by the chief aside from what was contractually uh, arranged, trying to stabilize the overtime expense uh, associated with the program, we've got some stability on staffing, which allows for stability in the assumption for overtime. In prior years, there was a high degree of instability on, on staffing, which was reflected by high utilization of overtime. Last year, there was a conversation as to whether it made sense to reduce or could you assume that overtime could be reduced if you hired an additional uh, dispatcher? You all end cost on the dispatcher would not, would increase the salary line, but it would not negate the overtime line. So net, you would be increasing the budget for communications uh, and all of the expenses, including an additional employee getting uh, healthcare benefits. Uh, so it's something that was discussed in the past. It was looked at again this year. You're still at a point where the net cost to the town is higher by a staffer than maintaining the overtime. Um, the only benefit of having the staffer aside from the increased expense is again, staffing predictability. Uh, any questions on dispatch? Or Communications, excuse me? Uh, if not, then that takes us to commu, uh, to animal control. Just tab nineteen. This budget two is proposed to decrease uh, from the twenty twenty-one level to what's proposed for you. The largest expense is the cost of the animal control officer. Uh, who's a unionized employee. You'll note that there is a zeroing out of the part-time uh, employee line. Uh, so the part-timers uh, have not really provided any service uh, since we've been operating in the COVID world. Uh, and desire that they, that they have to move off to retirement. Uh, so we appreciate their prior service, but it seems as if we can deliver animal control services without the need to maintain two part-timers, uh, so that's proposed to be phased out. The rest of the expenses, the adjustments were, were really made to set it with historical expend rates. Uh, so the cost for the veterinarian deals with dogs when it's their time. Um, was requested at a thousand, I mentioned it at nine hundred, which keeps it in line with where it was last year and sort of that historical spend rate. There's been less of a need for the vet or people have been doing a better job of collecting their, their loose animals. Uh, training is proposed to be reduced from where it was last year uh, at the department request. And the general supplies uh, was taken down to keep it flat with last year and in line with where things have really kind of averaged out in years prior outside of your fiscal year nineteen twenty. Uh, any questions on animal control?
All right, Carl, I'm just going back to communications. I don't know if you want to eliminate the employees' names from uh, the document? Sort of, we're a little bit inconsistent. I see we have um, other areas, the budget, and then some areas we don't have their, their names.
Yeah, that's easy enough to resolve with Sue and I believe Sue's on the call, so can follow up on that as we adjust, make new versions of the budget.
No problem, I'll take care of that.
Uh, next would be fire marshal. Which is tab twenty. Uh, smallish budget, no increase. Um, most significant cost here is for staff, which is our fire marshal and then uh, deputies. There is some efficiency here by given the fact that one of our deputies works in another municipality, so when you get to the other line items uh, that involve training and the like, we're only carrying portion training costs. Um, which is a good fortune that we have to have the staff we have who are also working in other municipalities. The other equipment line item at a thousand dollars supports uh, fire investigation equipment since fire marshal is involved in investigations of where there's suspected arson. Your general supplies go towards personal protective equipment, uh, to be worn. Uh, dues and fees is payment towards um, professional associations, uh, again, a partial payment for two of the three staffers. Questions on fire marshal? Uh, if not, that takes us to the fire department, uh, tab twenty-one. Uh, so bottom line of the fire department budget is flat compared to the year prior. Uh, there's not much movement between line items with where, where things are. There's a reduction in what's classified under the town's charter accounts of other, uh, which is then uh, reflected up in the salaries, which is providing for additional compensation bookkeeper that provides support to the, to the fire department. The rest of the line items, there's been an effort to try and control costs and keep things flat for expenses that are incurred by the department for utilities and some of their, their maintenance uh, expense for operating the, the fire department. Uh, the chief is online. If there's questions on the fire department? Uh, if there's no questions or comments, we would move on to economic development on tab twenty-two. Uh, so economic development, uh, if you look at the budget history, uh, it's not been consistent year over year. There's been different expenses in the budget. Um, so this year reflects an attempt to get into a formalized program. In this particular instance, the request is for somebody to provide part-time business outreach through uh, a formal business visitation program. The assumption is that we'll have, we would have one part-time employee here uh, one day per week at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. That would provide a customer driven, customer-centric approach to trying to do outreach with uh, our business community, collecting benchmark information to understand what the needs of um, business community are in town, whether it's zoning regulation or regulatory relief, what are the challenges that they experience? Uh, having a business in Clinton, what their needs are to be a success in this community. Um, also try and get a bead on businesses that need either some, some support from the town or the state, uh, if they're in trouble or businesses that are looking for growth and are looking for opportunities to expand. So there's funding provided for that part-time position as well as some operating supplies that may be needed for that individual uh, as they go out and try and work with the business community. This opportunity to also work with commercial real estate community to shop uh, and host events that focus around vacant spaces in Clinton, so that we can try and make sure that the town is on the map with commercial real estate. Uh, as an option, uh, compared to this, I did have conversations with um, economic development firms to try and identify whether that's a better delivery system than what was requested originally from the commission to have the part-time employee. Having the firm is probably a better execution because you have uh, somebody who's outside of the town and more experienced, so there's an opportunity for consistency. Uh, however, it's a, it's a cost item and a significant cost item over the twelve thousand dollars that's proposed here. Uh, so we'd be looking at a thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar engagement for a firm to pick that up and provide the business community support, so it's really trying to come up with a reasonable budget, uh, and that's the trade-offs that you make, so it's, it's, we hope we'll be able to find somebody when we put an ad out with the skillset to do it. In order to try and fit something in here that makes sense to the taxpayer, uh, includes the business community and make that trade-off between program execution versus right sizing the expense associated with it. Uh, any questions on the EDC?
Yes, Carl, just quickly, this person would report to you and then have ongoing communications with John Gaskowski and I know John Allen's on the call here too, or at least was, um, is that how this, this position would play out?
That's how I would envision it, um, so I'd be putting together a job spec for the position. The person would have to be accountable to the manager under the charter for all employees accountable to the manager. They would be providing reports and an interface with the EDC. Um, but from terms of a direction, it would be coming through the manager. And part of that would be trying to tie in um, a consultant planner. When this works and works well, you will, uh, you would see that business visitation would trigger questions or concerns as it relates to planning for a business that's looking to expand or somebody who's looking for an advocate to help navigate the process. Uh, so your business visitation guide would come in and connect with um, the town planner to help chart a course for a business that's looking to expand to help them work through the town and our process and provide a little bit more. to help them work through the town and our process and provide a little bit more of a customer friendly experience rather than having to navigate different boards and commissions.
Thank you.
If there's no questions or comments, then the next up would be elections. Just tab twenty-three. So this is the register of voters expense. Did not touch the budget as requested by the registrars beyond simply a policy discipline on adjustments to pay. They put in a request for additional salary of two hundred dollars each. Four hundred dollars is not something that's going to make or break the budget, but it's really more that should be a decision made by the council to increase their rate of pay to keep it moving forward. So we don't have big one-time adjustments. So in terms of process, the council should make that decision. And then the budget would reflect what the council's decision is. The rest of the line items, we're trying to make some assumptions in terms of what an election is going to look like going forward. So again, we're making some assumptions on the need for part-time election workers. If we're going to be doing something that, then we still have COVID-type rules buzzing around for how we're supposed to be providing our operations, whether it's in-person voting or heavy utilization of absentee ballots again, as was the case in the presidential. I think it's really a matter of we've got to get some experience to understand what elections are going to look like post-COVID and new utilization of absentee ballots as a means for voting. Rest of the line items are as requested, so service contracts deals with maintenance of the electronic voting machines. General Supplies pays for voter canvas, which is mandated by the state to regularly update to make sure that we have valid histories. Other Supplies provides for food for election workers during the different elections. Dues and fees are the dues to the Press for Voters Association, ROVAD, which is a mandated expense also. Any questions on the elections and meetings budget? If not, then we skip over Harbor and we skip over Shellfish, which we will address next week. And move to silver fairness, tab twenty-seven. So silver fairness is a small budget. There is a salary line item that provides a stipend to the emergency management director supposed to be funded at the same level it was last year. Training, you can see that there hasn't been a lot of documented budget history as it related to training. So the request was for two thousand, but in discussions with the management director, that became clear that that was an item that could be reduced down to one thousand. General Supplies, so this starts to fund how we need to position the emergency management needs that we're going to have going forward. So in a post-COVID world, we would be looking to buy water cots, things of that nature to provide support in the event of disasters where we're trying to do some degree of sheltering to support those that might be displaced by an incident. If we're still dealing with some kind of pandemic type activity, I'm not sure what that's going to look like because I'm not sure what what any of us know what a pin, what a continued pandemic is going to look like. But there will, there would be some sort of expense in order to support ongoing emergency needs of the town.
Carl, it's Christine Gupiel. I had asked during my tenure for the emergency management director to start to document his time allocated to the emergencies because there were, I think, three of them during my time, especially the FEMA one. And now that we're in the pandemic, so that we have a better understanding of that person's commitment, committed time to the position. Is that process still happening right now? Documenting hours attributed to the position?
I think COVID blew that out of the water pretty quickly. Mike has been spending an extraordinary amount of time dealing with COVID response. So our tracking for an event that has not ended on what is approaching a year is a significant time commitment out of the emergency management director. It's not a one-off storm where it happens, you recover and you return to some sense of normalcy. Eleven months into the COVID pandemic, Mike has been providing a significant contribution of additional time to the town.
Now, I do recognize that. I think the rationale was to assess whether or not there was a need to create a deputy structure. You know, it's difficult to assess because of his other roles within the community, the fire department, and to break that out, but the, at least looking at the substantial amount of paperwork that he needed to fill out, especially during the FEMA event and recognizing that without his role and function, it would have been very difficult to get that work done. Just curious.
If there's no other comments or questions, next up is the library, tab twenty-eight. Support of library system. I'll note that a roughly five thousand dollar request was made to increase the allocation made to the library. It's proposed to be funded at the same level as it was in twenty twenty-one. Trying to reflect that we're trying to keep the budget as tight as possible for this year. Based in the discussions that took place during the budget review, Mary Beth felt that that was something that could be absorbed if needed. So it doesn't reflect a backing off of a commitment to the library, just trying to balance out a budget in a difficult budget. Any library-related questions? If not, I think we can start moving through some of the remaining budgets for this evening a little quicker. Next up is health, which is on tab twenty-nine. This is our member contribution to CRAD, Connecticut River Area Health District. That's proposed to stay flat from the years prior, so there is no increase for our contribution to support CRAD, who I would note has also been heavily involved in the COVID response. Propane, again, this is a number that comes to us from the regional propane court. There's a small reduction proposed from them to us, which has been carried forward. A small, small reduction there, but it's a significant budget we've got on the book. Water and hydrants. We're working through this one still based on new guidance that came from Connecticut Water just recently. So the budget was proposed, making an educated guess in terms of where rates were going to go. The cost for hydrants is going to be phased in over a number of months. So there's actually three levels of monthly payment that goes towards hydrants in the upcoming fiscal year as they get to a rate stabilization. They've also made an assumption that their rate docket is going to be approved, which included some adjustment towards the fundamental rate, the base rate that's paid for, which is number of hydrants and then linear feat of water line that supports the individual hydrants. So this has been some back and forth between Sue and I and the staff and the water company to make sure that we can size this budget appropriately. Based on that back and forth, it appears as if you could cut the number that's recommended. A reduction of twenty-two thousand and twenty-six dollars could be taken to the five hundred and thirty, which is there. So that's, that's a cut that the council can make at its level in response to the new information that came in from the water company this week.
Do we need to make a motion now, Carl, on that?
No, you don't need to do that tonight. I'm just telling you that there's a cut there for you. When we convene in March, that's where we'll have all the motions for at least these known cuts that you can make coming out of this process. If you have other cuts to make, that would kind of be the point to discuss. That's how we ran it last year.
Okay.
Because we're, I mean, we're still working through assumptions. I've got our liability carrier, our agent is supposed to be giving us updates on insurance, whether that will be time for the twenty-fifth, or whether that's something that we bring up in March. Again, you know, that would be a reduction that I would tell you you could take to those line items once we know what all our renewals are.
Sounds good.
Carl, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
And I think you and I have spoke about this previously, but maybe you could enlighten all us again. Obviously, these are assets of the water company. And we tax them from a property tax point of view. But you mentioned to me one time that their liability to us is capped per PURA. Is that correct?
PURA is the regulatory brake that controls where their utility rates can go. So they have to appeal to PURA and there's a public process that they have to go through in order to get rate increases. So PURA can award the rate that they request or PURA can make adjustments to it downward. But they're, they're the regulatory body that regulates the utilities.
Then I'm probably incorrect. Was it a state statute that capped what we can value their assets in the ground?
Taxing and levying.
In other words, in other words, we could, what we value their assets for the water lines that they charge our residents, we can't charge, we can't tax them at fair market value, can we, or cost?
You don't have that power. No. If you think about it, if we taxed them, that would flow through to the utility rate. That would then have to be paid by all rate users because that would be an additional operating expense for them to pay to deliver the water because they're, in this particular case, you're paying for transport or the transit or conveyance of water through water lines. Adding that expense simply increases the cost to do business, which then flows through a rate docket to PURA.
This is Christine Gupiel. Mark, can you also just clarify, are you specifically talking about the pipes on private property? Or the pipes along public roads or both?
Public roads, you know, because they have assets that are substantial. But we don't, they're unique as a business that we, other businesses, we charge on their their assets for, you know, a property tax. But we don't in this case. And here's an asset, a water meter, excuse me, water hydrants, that they garner a half a million dollars from town of Clinton. But we don't, we can't value that as income. We can't look at that as income for them and then tax accordingly. They're unique. They're a privately held corporation, not a public entity. And they get to wear two hats here.
It's definitely interesting perspective, you know, and I guess if we went along the path of burying our electric lines and/or if you looked at taxing coals as well, that if we had buried our electrical lines on Route One, would that be included in your, your thoughts?
Well, they have overhead lines too, and I think that's, Carl, you'll tell us, that is also we are, even though we can't tax that asset of theirs, either if it's above the ground or below the ground.
There used to be a program where the state would provide some, well, it was a grant aid payment that went towards providing something, but those programs all fall by the wayside eventually as the state skinnies down what money's flowed to local government. The last budget for this evening is street lighting. So there's a significant reduction here. As I noted last year, the twenty twenty-one budget was going to be the last year of the lease payments for the town taking control of its streetlights away from Eversource, which allowed for the LED upgrade of our lights. So the lease has been paid off. So the expense for twenty-one, twenty-two going forward is really kind of the utility expense of what it costs to energize the lights. And we're purchasing the electricity as a commodity at a different rate than standard offer that's offered by the utility. So we're now in a different level of funding needed for streetlights than what you've seen in the past. So there's been kind of a, you'll see that there's a big drop there, which provides some happy relief to the budget history. If there's no questions on street lighting, that's it for tonight. We would reconvene on the twenty-third, Tuesday, next Tuesday. That evening is devoted just to the Board of Education for more detail on information you received already from superintendent. And then we get back to the town budget that Thursday, the twenty-fifth for water pollution, parking rigs, harbor commission, shellfish, debt capital, which will be a longish discussion, general government and other, other general government. And we also need to include revenue in that conversation now that we have something to talk about with the governor's budget. So that's, that's it for this evening. Any other questions or comments for tonight?
I just want to thank you, Carl, and all the department heads for all the work that they've done in trying to put this budget together for us as a council. Obviously, it makes our jobs a lot easier knowing that you guys are working through the numbers before this gets to us and we can look at something that's just about the final product. So I really do want to appreciate and thank everybody for all the hard work they put in through all the budget process so far this year.